All right, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Welcome to the Klamath County Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forum, live from the auditorium at Oregon Tech Center for Excellence in Engineering and Technology. I say that because our friends at mybasin.com are live streaming this and this will be available, recorded after the forum. So, I am your host Heather Harder, the Director of the Klamath County Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, we are proud to partner with My Basin Media to expand our coverage to not only the citizens in this room, but also all of you out there on the Internet. We have also arranged with My Basin to, as I said, post this program on their website, mybasin.com, for those who are not able to attend or watch right now. We also want to thank Randy Shaw and Coldwell Banker for sponsoring this forum. Can we just get a quick round of applause for My Basin, Randy Shaw, Coldwell Banker, and Oregon Tech for their efforts? I believe that one of the most important things we can do in our community is get involved, and one way to do that is vote. And not just vote, but to take the time to carefully research the candidates and the issues we are voting on. This forum is one opportunity to do that. The Chamber believes that all of our members and non-members should have opportunities to hear directly from the candidates, to learn about their background and experience, and learn how they feel about issues important to each of you. Tonight, there are no right or wrong answers, there's just information so that you can make an informed decision. Prior to us coming here today, we discussed the rules of the forum with all of the candidates. They will each have two minutes for an opening statement, 90 seconds to answer the questions, and at the end, two minutes for a closing statement. The order of the candidate responses was randomly chosen earlier today, in the order that they're seated in. Prior to tonight, none of the candidates were given any questions that will be asked by our panel, and all the candidates have agreed to abide by these rules. As for you in the audience, we do have some ground rules to help things go smoothly and help our friends out on the Internet here. Please maintain respectful behavior at all times, refrain from disruptive or distracting actions, please don't interrupt the candidates while they are speaking or answering questions. If you haven't already done so, please silence your cellphones, no heckling. And let's hold our applause until the end. I want to introduce our panel that's going to be asking questions. Todd Andrus, Pacific Power and the Chair of the Chamber's Government Affairs Committee; Dr. Amanda Blodgett with Klamath Health Partnership, I just had to say that. And she's also the President of the Chamber Board this year. Keeping time, we have Erica Rogers. So, candidates, Erica will give you a 30-second warning when you have 30 seconds left, and then a red stop sign when time is up. If you are in the middle of a sentence, you can feel free to continue that, but please stop after that sentence is done. So, I'm going to introduce the candidates. Before we get started, we have Andy Nichols, Alan Headley, Dan Martin, Mos Strickell, Regina Jackson, Dan Gerard, and Ron Mo. So, at this time, if my timekeeper is ready, we're going to, if you want to pick up your microphone, we're going to let Andy get started. You now have two minutes to tell us a little bit about you.
Hello? Does it work?
All right, well, I'm Andy Nichols. I'm originally from Klamath, grew up here, graduated from Lost River High School in 1997. Shortly after graduation, I enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. I spent 20 years in the Marines, traveling all around the world, held a multitude of jobs within the military, and finally culminated working at the Pentagon and Headquarters Marine Corps of the National Capital Region and Quantico. Awarded multiple times for valor and merit and all those types of things. Retired from the Marine Corps, moved back here with my wife and my four kids, who attend Henley now, and came back to our home. This is my home, this is where I will always call home and where I will always be. And then I went to work for the Klamath County Sheriff's Office. I spent five years working as Corrections Deputy, a deputy, worked my way up, held multiple positions within the Sheriff's Office, and I was the President of the Union that represents the deputies. We negotiated and forced a contract with the Commissioners. I've worked on command teams, have executive-level experience from my time in the military. I hold a Bachelor's Degree in Political Science. I focused on state and local government. I've been through multiple leadership academies and leadership schools during my time in the military, all the way up to the highest enlisted executive levels. And I believe that's what I bring to this board more than anything. I bring leadership, I bring somebody that is from here, that intimately understands the issues on an emotional level, on a level that all of us can connect with. My wife is a local business owner of a farm, feed, and supply store here locally, and my kids, I have three triplets, they're 18, they're graduating from Henley and moving on to college and military and other things, and then I got a little one. I resigned from the Klamath County Sheriff's Office so I could focus solely on the best way to serve Klamath County, because that's what I want to do, is I want to continue to serve like I have my whole life. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all coming. Name's Alan Headley, grew up on a farm, that's where I started as a child. Graduated, went into the military, served on-ably three years there during the Vietnam War, along with my brother. From there, went to work at Loma Linda University, challenged Nurses Board, left there after two years, went into construction the rest of my life, most of it, and graduated from the Sheriff's Academy in 1985. Served the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department with honor for approximately 15 years. Then also attended the college in the high desert for further education in law enforcement, criminal law. Left there, came up here, worked for law firms just before I came for four years, got educated in that field, built my house up here. Came up here approximately in 2007 and stayed here off and on until my house was finished in 2012. Been here ever since. At this present time, I'm very dissatisfied with the way things are here in Klamath County. And at this point, I figure as a general contractor, that I got my license in 2006, been a contractor ever since, figured that we could make a difference by working together to change this community and make sure that the county does not get annexed into the city anytime too soon to make your tax burden too hard. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dan Martin. I came to the Klamath Basin 28 years ago with my wife and family, and since that time, I've been a general contractor, a building developer, and that's basically all I've done. I don't have any experience, be right up front with you, about anything else, but I know how to build homes, and I think that's what we need to do here. Without some growth, building in this county, we need to create jobs, we need to use our own land as we see fit, not what the state of Oregon thinks that we need to do. And by building homes, we create a much larger tax base. We need that tax base for Klamath County. If we don't have more money, folks, to do the Sheriff's Office, homelessness, everything depends on money, and I hate to be the guy telling you about money, but that's the way it is, that if we grow, develop some of this land, and create more businesses, we'll have that solve for us. We need the money to help with programs, the homeless crisis here, the housing crisis. It's all great that we come into town, and, I mean, I got to say it, we see this beautiful jet and everything, but going around the corner and seeing all the homeless people didn't do us much good. I'm just, I'm not for that. I think we need responsible growth, we need somebody in the building department, the planning department, that's going to make this happen for all of us. I've dealt with hundreds of people through the 28 years in Klamath County, the Development Office of Planning and Building, and I think I know how to get this done. So, you know, let's build and grow, let's be able to support the sheriff, and, you know, pay the bills for the sheriff, let's get those pods back open, let's have a safe environment for all of us to live and grow, and I want to be part of the government that helps everybody. I don't want to be the person that's holding everything up, so that's my big ambition for you folks. Thank you very much.
My name is Mos Strickell, and I am running for Klamath County Commissioner, because I believe we need leadership that knows the issues, that knows the players behind the scenes, that knows the negotiations that are ongoing, who doesn't need to be explained where things are and why the way things are at. For the last three years, I've worked for the farmers and ranchers here in the basin, working for the Klamath Water Users Association as their Director of Water Policy. For the nine years prior to that, I worked for the Bureau of Reclamation, U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, as a Water Contracts and Water Rights Specialist, basically as a liaison to the districts and to the individual water users who they serve. I'm acutely aware of the water issues here in the basin, and I believe there is a path to resolving them, through local leadership and through the local community, working in partnership with our other governments in the basin, including our tribes. That's what I've been doing my entire time here in Klamath Basin for the last 12 years. I'm a Water Rights Attorney by training, coming from Colorado. Attended my first year of law school at the University of Oregon, and then transferred and completed two years at Tulane University in Louisiana. I'm married and have two kids, thank you, two kids who attend Crosspoint University here locally. I believe we have serious issues that are facing the county: solar development, affordable housing, dam removal, water management, including this year. We are working to resolve those issues as we speak, and I believe it's critical that we have leadership that is able to tackle these issues directly. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, everyone. My name is Regina Jackson, and I'm also running for Commissioner along with eight other people. Isn't it incredible that we have so many people running? So, I am a Klamath Falls native, I graduated from KU in 98. From there, I went to Pepperdine University, where I got a degree in Organizational Communications, and I met my husband. And we returned seven years ago to here, to Klamath County, where I grew up and we're raising our three little kids, they also go to Crosspoint. And so, I have a degree in Organizational Communications, my background is in business. I have over 20 years of management experience, including HR. I worked for Fortune 500 companies, including JCPenney and Target. I ran a Target store in Simi Valley, California, it's $50 million a year with over 200 employees and an overnight logistics process. So, what I did at Target was I moved from location to location every 18 months, fixing broken processes. And that's what I'm stellar at, is fixing broken processes, and that's what I look at our local government today. And I know that I can stand in the gap of what's happening with our local government and the taxpayers. I also have a, I also worked for the Kohler Company, where I ran two showrooms, so I've run multiple showrooms with many employees, and those were in California as well, I ran two furniture showrooms down there. So, my goal for Klamath County is to focus on education, communication, and accessibility. So, the taxpayers should know where their money is going, and those that they elected, how they're voting. There needs to be transparency, I know that word's a little bit overused, but there also needs to be accessibility. You should know where your Commissioners are at all times, they should be working 40 hours a week, they get a pretty high salary, and so we should know, as the shareholders in this company that is Klamath County, we are in charge, we are in the employers, and there should be accessibility. So, that's why I'm running, please vote for me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Gerard, and I'm running for County Commissioner. I am the newbie in the area, I've only been in Klamath County for just under two years. Moved out here about that time to be with my grandchildren. When I was back in Massachusetts, I was in the Army National Guard for six years, came out as a Staff Sergeant, went through Non-Commission Officer School, came out of that, went into law enforcement, spent 29 years at the local and state level. When I was at the local level, I was a Union President for my Police Department for eight years. I worked at the state level, working in the Boston vicinity, if you can't already hear the accent. And then when I retired from law enforcement, I moved with my late-in-life daughter out to the western part of Massachusetts and went into the school system. I was in that school system for 14 years. I worked with children with learning disabilities and also with children with anger management. Did pretty well with that for 14 years, and then that waned out. I then went and became a Division Manager at a mountain resort in western Massachusetts, running seven departments with about 310 people. When I moved out here, I noticed that I started watching on these meetings, that I didn't like what I was hearing. I wasn't hearing any input from you, the voters, or you, the homeowners, the families. And that is my whole deal. When I was Selectman in Massachusetts, I started an email system where people had the opportunity to tell me how they felt about a certain item that was coming down the road, and that's how I voted. I don't have any voting rights anymore, just yours.
Good evening. Good evening, can you hear me all right? Cheryl and I moved from Lakeview to Klamath Falls in 1984, and have lived, worked, and raised our family here since. From the very start, I've been active on boards and community service organizations: the Klamath County Fair Board, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, the Advisory Board for Klamath County Department of Developmental Disability Services, as an advisor to the Department of Environmental Equality with respect to the area's recycling capabilities, and currently as Chairman of the Board for the Klamath and Lake Counties Council on Aging. These are just an example, there's been numerous others. I've held significant management jobs with local companies for many years, with ownership of the Lost River and Butte Valley Star Newspapers, management positions with both Lakeside Motors and Harvest Ford, and 10 years with Reach Incorporated, where I served both as Director of Operations and six years as CEO/Executive Director. With 15 years' experience handling multimillion-dollar budgets and balance sheets, reading P&amp;L statements, and overseeing a staff of up to 200 people. Cheryl and I have been members of the Klamath Christian Center for 32 years. I am motivated by Christian principles and family values. These qualities form the foundation of my commitment to integrity, compassion, and service. I firmly believe that cultivating a community that embodies these values, we can promote unity and respect for all the residents of Klamath County. Thank you.
Thank you all. For this next portion where they're going to ask you questions, Amanda and Todd, we're going to just round robin, so the first question will go to Alan, and we'll come back around, and then Dan, and so on and so forth. So, when you're ready, Amanda.
Good evening. What is the current budget for the Klamath County government? In your opinion, is the current funding adequate to serve our citizens, and if not, what is your plan to improve that funding?
that I can see, and I think most of the people in here would probably agree with that. We go to the meetings, we get two minutes to voice our opinions or our concerns. I saw two minutes here, and it kind of reminded me of the Commissioner meetings, but this is a little different. As far as the budget goes, committees, I'd look into possibly cutting those down, so there's more transparency with the Commissioners as far as them doing their job. Cap their salaries, 3% raise per year or cost of living. Anything to do to balance the budget and give the sheriffs the money they need to do their job. I go back to 2015, when SCRA was fighting for money for the Sheriff's Department, and I looked at the CD and reviewed it the other day. This battle has been going on for years now, understaffed, underpaid people taking care of us. It's got to stop. Somewhere, somehow, the budget has to be tightened. So, a full transparency and audit of the budget to see where the money is going, and let the people know where it's going during these meetings. Thank you.
Oh, same question?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I believe, kind of like Al, I believe in transparency of the budget. I think that one of the first things I would do as a Commissioner, with my experience, budgeting is everything. When I build houses, subdivisions, we have to have that budget, it all needs to be transparent. But the other thing with the money thing is that we need to grow, we need to figure out how to have some land use to grow and create more money. Budget cuts alone aren't going to do it for us, folks, we need to continue to grow, that's what I would like to do, create housing for the homeless, have the money for our programs. Every program needs to be looked at, the homeless crisis is also, not only housing, but it's mental health. We need to have money for those, for all those programs, and to do that, we need to continue to grow, build houses, and have a good look at the budget, which is my first option. I mean, when I got into this, two months ago, kind of laid into this, the budget questions are a little beyond me right now, but I can tell you, when I get there, if I get there, with your vote, that's the first thing I'm looking at, we're going to have to face some hard cuts, and we're going to have to promote the growth so that we can create more money. Thank you.
Yeah, so I can't cite specific figures as to what the current expenditures are of the county, although I believe around the $10 million figure is my understanding. But I will talk about some of the revenue issues that I've been looking at. For example, we're losing our largest revenue generator for the county, that's in the J.C. Boyle Power Plant and its annual payment to Klamath County. Klamath County will absorb that land, but it won't generate any revenue for the county directly. Another one that I've been looking into lately has been solar development, and the revenues generated from solar development relative in Klamath County, which is about 400, roughly over, slightly over $400,000, by my last figures, as far as I could tell, in terms of annual payments to the county in lieu of taxes generally. Some of our surrounding counties are in that same order or larger. Christmas Valley Development is bringing that county's revenue up to about $1 million. So, those are our interests and issues that we need to look into from a county level, and think about how we can responsibly grow our county revenue base without increasing taxes, of course. Thank you.
Well, I think for me, it needs to be, first, you need to be able to find the budget. So, I don't know if you guys have gone onto the county website, it's nearly impossible to find that budget, so I actually had to tap into one of Commissioner Minty to help me find it. It's 273 pages, guys. And I am part of a family of five, living off one income, and I know when times are lean, I can't come with my hand out asking for more. So, we have got to pull ourselves up by our bootstraps, and we've got to find out places where we can cut. So, I'd imagine going through that 273 pages, there's some areas we can cut. But what we need to start doing first is we have got to go through these departments and give them reviews. You can't hold people accountable to their jobs unless they have annual reviews, and then you can decide, you know, is this something we need to cut, is this a position we need to keep? But at the end of the day, we need to take a look at it as a county, okay? Do we want the services, or do we want lower taxes? You can't have both, can't have both. So, we need to take a look at that, have some honest conversations with the citizens who need to be a part of this, because they are the shareholders in this company, and they need to know where their dollar is going. So, I think it's imperative that we communicate with the public, and the budget is accessible to them. Thank you.
One of the things that I've noticed watching the committee meetings is a couple of times that they have voted on putting something in place, and one of the committee members would say, "Well, where's this money coming from?" "Oh, don't worry about it, we'll find it." That's a problem, if you've got your upper echelon that's doing that. We need to go with line-item budgets, and we need to stay with those line items. You cannot go in and say, "I need to take money out of this line item," unless you come before either the Finance Committee, or you come before the Commissioners, to say, "How is that going to affect the rest of the budget?" Pulling money is like having a pile in the middle of the room, and we draw from it, and then somebody in one of the departments finds out, "Hey, that was my money." You can't keep doing that. That's what they do right up straight to the White House, they're moving money around, nobody's responsible for it, we've got to start looking at it. That's the only way we're going to get this back online. Thank you.
Okay, so, I have looked at the budget, it's in the hundreds of millions, it's not a few million, there is some fat in the budget, but it's few and far between. You know, when you have $4.50 a gallon for fuel, and you have all of those other things that the rest of us do, you know, the county has to do that, too. So, our options are going to be, let's cut some services, or let's find another way to fund some things. And I think we need to start looking at ways that people other than just the property owners can burden some of the taxes. There are other counties who have ways that they burden some things besides just your property owners. In today's world, with Klamath Falls median income at under $50,000 per household, how many of us are property owners? And how many can afford to buy a $300,000 house? I mean, I don't know what your houses are, Dan, but they're expensive. So, we need to do some real research on finding ways to burden somebody besides our property owners, as well as taking a look at our budgets, to make sure that they're all in line with where they should be.
Hello, Andy Nichols again. Yeah, so Ron was much more correct, that the budget is large, more like the $240 million range. And that's including assets and investments and all those types of things. And then, I think with the budget, I'm not going to stand up here and beat on our Commissioners and say that they've done a horrible job. What they have done is they've been somewhat transparent, we've got budget committees, you can watch the budget committee interact and work on the budget. And we have a Commissioner that's very involved in that budget, and I'm not going to say they're not working toward helping Klamath County, because they are. If elected Commissioner, I will be there, that's one thing I can promise you, is I will be there. I will be there to account for every dollar spent, how we're accounting for that money, where it's going, and what services you're getting for it. And then the bigger piece of it, I think, is that how do we communicate that to the public? How does the public understand which money is mandated to be spent in a certain way, which money has some more leeway to it? Because people get stressed out about things like the jet, when maybe they don't understand the pots of money that came from and how that money is used. As far as transparency, yes, it would be nice to see departments put their departmental budgets that maybe are more line item, and contract down to the smaller things that you buy. But doing it on a macro scale at the county, that's going to cost more time, money, effort in and of itself. Thank you.
Dan, we're going to start with you on this one. What is the largest and most impactful change you would like to make if you are elected to this position?
I think the biggest change that I would like to make is my basic platform, I'd like to see Klamath grow responsibly. I'd like to see Klamath grow responsibly and raise the tax base. I'll keep harping on it, but unless we create some growth in this town, we're going to go nowhere. I always call it the caveman syndrome. If the caveman didn't try to improve anything, we'd still be cavemen. So we need to look at the land use. We need to look at the, you know, the programs that we need to fund, the homelessness, mental health, obviously the sheriff's office. They all need to be looked at the budget, as we talked to before. But by far, we need to grow. We need to make the government accountable for creating jobs. We have great colleges here. We have two of the best colleges that anybody could ask for. OIT is in the top 10 in the country. KCC has developed all these great programs. Let's, you know, support our kids, all our young people, that they can go to these colleges and get jobs here so that they can stay here instead of losing our youth. We need people here. And as I said, my platform, to continue to grow so that we can manage all these projects. Thank you.
Yes, so this is an easy one for me and I can stay close to home. Water. Water solutions in this basin are attainable and they are attainable within the next four years. And that is primarily why I'm running for Klamath County Commissioner. I won't even touch on dam removal, which is an issue unto itself. But as of today, this afternoon, somebody can catch a salmon, a spring run Chinook salmon in Howard's Bay. Those fish are here. They are coming. The state of Oregon is going to actively reintroduce them. The city of Klamath Falls, which is diverting water from Link River essentially, out of the ground, the South Suburban Sanitation District in terms of its sewage effluence, the Klamath County Drainage Service District, along with all the farmers and ranchers in the Klamath Basin, all have a responsibility and all frankly have a liability under the Endangered Species Act, not to mention other federal laws like the Environmental Clean Water Act, federal Clean Water Act. Those issues are solvable here at the local level in coordination, in cooperation with tribes. We are actively working on that today in order to get a commitment from the federal agencies to allow us to negotiate habitat conservation plan that will resolve these issues and take them out of federal control and turn them into a local issue. That's a solution. Thank you.
So while I can appreciate some that are really focused on a single issue, I think, you know, we have to be honest about, we have 6,000 square miles in Klamath County and there's a multitude of issues. So the issues that they're facing up in North County are different than the issues that they're facing on Blime Mountain are different than the issues that we're facing in Fort Klamath downtown. So yes, we have natural resources issues, a homelessness problem. We have, you know, safety, law and order. There's a multitude of issues that are going on in this county. And so drawing it down, you know, narrowing it down to one, I think is not part of what a commissioner should do. You should look at it holistically and what we can do with the 27 departments and over 400 employees. So that's why, again, I go back to my platform of communication, education, and accessibility. So the taxpayers need to know what the commissioners are doing, how they're voting, how the funding is going. You know, if you empower the public with knowledge, then they can assist you in this business that is Klamath County. So they're all important issues. They all need attention and we can only do that if we are standing up and have the proper advisory boards. And that's my plan as well, is to have advisory boards in areas, you know, like water, where I am not as proficient as Moss. So that is the plan, is taking it at a holistic approach because we all have different issues in different parts of the county and they all need to be addressed. Thank you.
So when I started this campaign, I started getting in touch with people around the county. And I have started advisory boards already with people in different sections of the county. They're telling me what people want. So the voters need to have contact with me to let me know what's going on in your area and what can be done. We need to deal with housing. When I went to the program this past spring, they had federal agents there that were talking about, there was money available for housing projects. All we had to do was put in for it. They would actually assist us in being able to file all the proper paperwork to get these grants. It's not a whole lot. It's 10 houses a year, but it's 10 houses that we didn't have. Veterans, veterans programs, very close to my heart. We've got to find some way to assist these people. It's just not that they need homes, they need other types of assistance. Some of them want homes, some of them don't want. They just want to live on the street, they want to live by themselves. And that's to be understood. It's a long process. I need to have your voices to me to know what to do for you.
So this is a question that we often get asked at these forums. I sat down and thought I'd make a priority, so I made a list. So education, drugs and drug enforcement, housing, preserving our heritage in business, farming, ranching, and timber products, economic development, and fiscal responsibility. I think we all recognize the role that education plays in building the next generation, our generation of leaders and generation of people that will continue this community as we move on. Preserving our agricultural heritage, they play a vital role in our local agriculture, some $350 to $450 million a year just in our farming. That's without our timber products and our ranchers. Without those, I can't say that we're going to collapse, but a good portion of our people who pay taxes are not going to be paying taxes. And I believe that a holistic view to community development will strengthen us. I think that we need to bring all of our players together, our actors in the community, the business, schools, churches, agriculture. And everyone needs to have a chance to thrive. Otherwise, we're all going to be having a problem. So, thank you.
Andy Nichols. So the largest change I would like to make, that's a tough question. My brain first goes to, do I want to make some large sweeping change? Government isn't necessarily supposed to be big and fast and change things. Typically, when government does that, they screw it up. It's supposed to be a methodical system where everybody gets input. Now, where do I want to focus? Well, it's easy to look at my last five years and say, okay, he's a cop. He's a law enforcement guy. He wants to focus on public safety. Absolutely, I totally want to focus on public safety. There's a lot of things that can be done in our county regarding improving public safety. And I've went and listened to these sheriff candidates, a bunch of them are here tonight, and they got a lot of great ideas. It's not my job to tell them what to do, but I would say it is my job as a commissioner to bring whoever that sheriff is going to be in with the community corrections, with the DA, behavioral health, our medical providers, and find ways to bring people together so we can facilitate new ideas and new innovative ways to explore public safety. So right now, I say, gee, that's where I'm at, public safety. However, I also realize that I haven't worked this job yet. And once you get into that job, I think that like any job, you're going to find what your niche is. Maybe it's public safety, who knows? Maybe I find out that I like housing more than Dan likes housing and I spend a lot of time on housing. I really think it's about getting in there, being a part of the process, and then figuring out where I would like to make that change.
It's a long list, but cover what we can in the time we have. I think the first, one of the first things I'd look into is the property code enforcement. I had issues on my street, saw a fit to take care of that lady, so those fines didn't go against her property tax. That has to stop. That has to have some division there with oversight. Also, Gilcrest and their sewer up in the northern part. I couldn't help but, last, in 2022, I went up there for one of the meetings and they said, oh, you're all here again. It must be two years. You must be here for our vote again. Wow, do we spend any time up there taking care of those people? Could that sewer problem that they have and all the money that was invested with proper oversight with the commissioners and other entities within the county yielded better results? We don't know. And stop the inner fighting. That's a little public safety issue within the different offices like the sheriff's department and the commissioners. Spending taxpayer money for what? Won't get into the logistics of that, but yes, there needs to be a little more division as far as interfering with the voted-in people. Thank you.
Mr. Driscoll, we'll start with you on this one. What strategies do you propose to stimulate economic growth and job creation within Klamath County, particularly in rural areas? And how do you plan to balance economic development with sustainability?
Yes, so I think we do have a great asset here in our educational institutions as well as our local school systems. And we import a lot of educated professionals into this basin. Fire technicians and fire crew leaders, biologists, hydrologists, water technicians, all sorts of jobs that are filled by people who come from abroad. And yes, they want new housing and yes, they want to live in this community and yes, they appreciate the outdoors. And then we have a whole group of young people who apparently, according to public surveys, really don't feel like they have opportunities and outlets here in Klamath County, which is amazing to me because we have the outdoors and it's generally free. So there is something we can promote and we can grow here, and that's our conservation economy. We can train our young kids, whether they be high school kids who want to just work in the forest in the summertime or OIT graduates who want to go on and be, you know, GS 12 government employees who run these organizations and are leaders unto their own. So that's something that we can build here locally and we don't have to change the way our community looks. Instead, we're just improving the environment that we're already trying to fix. So, thank you.
Man, Moss took my answer. Okay, so I absolutely agree with him. I think we need to tap into these great schools that we have here. I was blessed to be able to talk to Dr. Gutierrez at KCC and all the phenomenal things that are going on at that college. So we really need to tap into our students that we have here. Like he was saying, we're importing a lot of folks from out of state for the base and also for the hospital, you know. So how do we, so I was one of these people in '98, you know. There was no opportunities here and I left and I left for 15 years. You know, so what's something that could have caused me to stay? And I think for these more opportunities and really bridging that gap between local businesses and what's going on at KCC and OIT and getting them into these programs and encouraging them to stay. You know, so there could be some incentives there. So I absolutely agree. That was a great answer and I say ditto. Thank you.
So I'm going to chime in on that also. Education. One of the biggest things that I hear from kids that are graduating from high school is they can't wait to get out of this place. There's nothing to keep them here. We're not working as well as KCC. I mean, KCC, as far as I'm concerned, is one of the best organizations I have ever seen. They're getting people back into what we used to call the blue collar people. That was the people that were the grit of society. You're training people to go out, to have a good job, to be able to support a family and go forward. It is so important that we dedicate ourselves to these young men and women that are going through our education system because they're the future of Klamath County. And if we don't do it, this place is going nowhere.
So I'm not going to exactly ditto that, but it's a great answer and it's important. Over the years, Klamath County has been very supported by our agriculture industry. Our farmers, our ranchers, our timber industry people, they have done a great job of supporting us financially and keeping us on the map while we develop things like OIT, KCC, and other things. Casita is doing a great job of trying to attract new business and I give kudos to them. They work hard at it. They are in the room when the conversations are had. Even our commissioners a couple of years ago put together a deal to bring holiday markets here. Congratulations to them, those are big things. I believe that we have an opportunity in small businesses that are already here. People who, if we get 10 businesses to each put on five more employees because we make financial packages available to them for financing what they do at a reasonable rate, we can build our base of employment fairly strongly that way with businesses that we already know and that we can already get along with.
Hello, Andrew Nichols again. I'm not going to sit up here and doom and gloom about how Klamath County is in all kinds of trouble. I don't necessarily think we are. We heard a lot of good things up here tonight that we have going in the county with regards to education, with regards to small business. I know the chamber and the economic development groups, they do a lot of that work and are going to continue to do that work. And the commissioners have worked really hard on their strategic plan and working through the first pillar of economics. And there are a lot of good things to be proud about that the county has done. So what are my strategies? I want to continue those strategies and continue those things going forward. My wife was a benefit of that. She acquired a business using our local agencies through the chamber to help her acquire a new business that was owned by somebody out of town and brought it local and made that local. And I believe in those types of things and those types of organizations where we can grow small businesses, attract new entrepreneurship and new businesses, and then back into the education system, working on those trades. The KCC's got a lot of things going on with trades, so we have skilled workers and we can start it in the high school level. My daughter's going to graduate next week with a CNA. That's awesome. Those programs, we need to continue to support that so we have good workforce and, you know, ways to continue the economic development that we have done so far. Thank you.
I couldn't agree more with everybody that was up here that was that interested in helping with education. And OJT, on-the-job training with KCC, building houses. What better way to teach them? Integrate what we need in the community with the colleges to be able to achieve that goal. Work together on that. I've got someone that most likely will be my son-in-law one day. He's graduating in June from this college and they recruited him already to a different state. Let's try to keep the recruiting here. The recruiters come and they steal. They take things, just like they do with the hospitals. They go and recruit the good people over here to get them over to their hospital. That's the way it's done. That's business as usual. So we need to make incentives to keep them here. Whatever we need to do, we need to make sure that happens with this college and KCC. Integrate every part of it. Are we broke? No, we're not. We have a lot of potential here to grow. Thank you.
Well, being the last candidate finishing up the question, I'm really happy that pretty much everyone in the room agrees what we need to do. All the candidates had great answers. I think it's kind of sad that our young folks have decided to leave in the last couple of years. In my business, 28 years, I'm always looking for somebody to help or I'm always looking for somebody to fix my car, fix the farmer's tractors, help me build houses, be waiters and waitresses. All these jobs are all available. So I think as a county commissioner, the only thing extra that we can do is actually continue to support these. As everyone has stated, there's nothing new there and maybe create some sort of small incentive programs, tax incentives for the farmers. It's going to be tough for them if they don't get their water. What are we going to do for the poor farmers? We're just going to have to create programs and try to keep their kids here, too, and so everybody can be happy. Thank you.
So this next question is going to start with you, Regina. And I did get a note from our producer to help people online. We're going to go with two and then I'm going to re- We're going to go with two, and then I'm going to repeat the question so the people online are getting the question again. So we'll go to, repeat the question, go to, repeat the question, okay? Okay, here we go. Agriculture is a vital industry in Klamath County. How do you plan to support local farmers and ranchers addressing water rights issues and promote sustainable agricultural practices while balancing the needs of other sectors and protecting natural resources?
Okay, excellent question. So I'm sure you can tell I'm not a farmer or a rancher, okay? But I do know a lot about the water rights issue. So I am currently the chairwoman of the Republican Party, and we have quite a few ranchers and farmers in my group. And speaking with them over the past four or five years that I've been involved, I've really gotten to see the human toll that these regulations and decisions that are being made outside and usually by people that don't even ranch, farm, hunt, fish, any of those things, and how impactful it is to those in our community. I will say this, even though I'm not a rancher or a farmer, I do know the impact that the water has on this community. And without ranching and farming, there is no Klamath County. We have to be self-sustainable. As a county, we have to grow our own food. We have to have accessibility that. We cannot rely on these supply chains, as we've seen in the past couple of years what's happened to those supply chains. So as a commissioner, what can I do? It's what can I do and what will I do? What will I do is I will be an advocate. I will speak up. I will go to the meetings. I will make sure that the voices are heard of the underrepresented farmers and ranchers in this community and the impact of these natural resources issues. So I will be an advocate. I will use my voice and ensure that they are heard. Thank you.
Having only been here for a few years, I already know about the water problems that are affecting everybody in this county. From looking at different things that are online and reading different articles, it appears that the federal government is trying to shut down the outer skirt areas of these counties and bringing everybody into cities. As a commissioner, I'm only one person, and I will voice my opinion against anything that would remotely shut down the water that's coming here naturally. You have people that are getting their water rights removed, and they're still paying for those water rights. It's wrong. So what we need to do is, I need to be the royal pain in the backside with the government. I will be on the phone every single day. I always find that the squeaky wheel is the one that gets taken care of. I will keep calling and calling and calling until we get something done.
So let me repeat the question for you, Ron. Agriculture is a vital industry in Klamath County. How do you plan to support local farmers and ranchers addressing water right issues and promotes sustainable agricultural practices while balancing the needs of other sectors and protecting natural resources?
It's a difficult question. We all know that. Okay? I'm an agricultural guy. I moved here from Lakeview. I work in the off-season for a potato farmer. I drive spud truck for him. I've been, I've worked on farms and ranches all my life, since I was 11 years old. When I came here in 1984, water was an issue. Water's an issue today. And Moss is our expert on this. He works it every day, and I'm sure his answer is one that we really want to hear because it's probably a great one. From my perspective, we've tried, and we've tried, and we've tried different things. And I'm going to, I'm going to go to a family that I know for years and years. They sued the government, the Department of the Interior. They sued whoever they could find. They died of heart attacks, okay? Now their kids are running the company. I think the heart for those kind of actions is gone. I think our best hope for water is in collaboration. We need to find a way to get our tribes and our farmers together and agree on a solution, and we need to go to the government with it. And I know that in the Northern California area, there's some of that going on, and some of our people are sitting in on those meetings, and they're a part of that. I think our Down River tribes are going to be an issue, but I think with what we've got going on right now, I don't think that even some of our tribes are happy with the issue. So I think that we're going to be able to perhaps collaborate on the issue in the near future.
All right, thank you. Yeah, agriculture, obviously, it's huge. Something like $500 million turns over eight times in our local economy. We've all known that. I've been outworked the fields myself as a kid, dropping piping on the spuds, helping dig, all of that stuff. I understand how it's ingrained in who we are in Klamath County. And it's been a problem forever. And Moss, I'm going to challenge you a little bit here. This guy is the water guy. I've had lots of talks with him. He knows a lot. Well, there's several other people in our community that know a lot, too. And Moss, honestly, I want you right where you're at. And I don't know that this position is where I want you. This position, I want to dedicate to numerous things, but I want to be able to call on you. I want to be able to use you. I want to be an advocate and a sounding board for you. What I can do, and I've got lots of time spent in Washington DC, I can talk to politicians. I understand what motivates them, how to inspire a politician above me. And I want to work with people like Moss, like the Klamath Water Users Association, like our tribes, like the council of government that our commissioners have already put together, and be able to collaborate together and take those messages forward to our lawmakers. Again, with all due respect, that wasn't a knock on you at all. You're the water man. Thank you.
Alan, I'll repeat the question one more time for the last three. Agriculture is a vital industry in Klamath County. How do you plan to support local farmers and ranchers, address water right issues, and promote sustainable agricultural practices while balancing the needs of other sectors and protecting natural resources?
I'm going to try to integrate some of the last one with this. I'd stand by the 1906 Water Pact that was passed by Congress as the subsidiary to work with the tribes, the people here, and the water needs of the community. Without a basis to work with, which is 1906, says how and when the water is to be dispersed equally between all people, animals, farms, and work cohesively with the farmers, which I have been in touch with already in the past couple of years, out in the Bonanza area for solar. They don't want it. Well, it's going to come sooner or later, that's for sure, just like it did in the valley I came from. There's no stopping it. It's got tons and billions of dollars behind it, probably trillions. So what can we do? We can work with them. We can integrate like Europe is doing. They're putting the panels up 12 feet tall so animals can still graze, they can still plant food. So there are different ways to work with it. And with my capabilities and knowledge in the solar industry that I've worked in and the jobs that I've seen and how they're integrating it in Europe, it's absolutely fantastic. There's no reason we can't do it here. So, thank you.
I see the water issue as two things. First, we have Moss here. We all know he's, he knows everything about this. And this is, as a commissioner, this is the guy I'd be yielding to. I have a neighbor right next door, Ryan Cleaver. The only thing I've heard after all these years from the 80s, the 70s, all these issues is the federal government, the tribes, and the state all tell us what to do. Well, as a commissioner, the only solution I would have is to get all of us together for one voice. We need Moss, we need Ryan Cleaver, everybody else. That one voice has to be united. The second part of it is, I haven't heard anybody talk about wastewater. Both South Suburban and the city of Klamath Falls are putting all the wastewater down the river. We're not recovering that wastewater. It's not a great amount. It's a pretty good percentage. That's what we need to do. I believe Moss is involved in a project now. The governor doesn't, once we get in, put the water in the river, the governor doesn't want us to take it out. So we need to figure out what we can do with our wastewater. The big city of Las Vegas, I was just down there, they recover 98% of their water. That's what we need to do.
Well, this is an issue, growing up on a sheep farm, this is an issue, of course, that's dear to me. And I can certainly appreciate the value of agriculture. In fact, helped spearhead a study that's about to be released through OSU that Klamath County, as well as OSU, helped pay for, that will get more specific and give us up-to-date numbers on exactly the value of irrigated agriculture here in the Klamath Project and in the Klamath County as a whole. With respect to water issues, I have said it elsewhere and I'll say it here again. We do not have a water supply situation in the Klamath Basin. We do not have a fundamental shortage or deficiency in water. We have a fundamental deficiency and shortage of groups and entities and individuals getting along. And that goes for tribes and farmers and federal governments and within each other, within those groups and amongst those groups. So how do we solve these issues? Time is a big consideration. We think of them locally. I called up the chairman today of the Klamath Tribes and said, "We're asking, and we're working with the Uroch tribe and the Karuk tribe on getting 30,000 acre feet more this year right now for our farmers." That's how those issues get resolved. In the long run, and it was just addressed, and I'd love to address it in greater detail if I had the time, but we are the floodplain. This is the floodplain of the Klamath River, the upper Klamath Basin. That floodplain needs to be restored in order to address water quality in the Klamath River. So that will save farmers, it'll save our refuges, and it'll clean up our water. Thank you.
Okay, candidates, this will be our last question, and Mr. Gerard, we'll start with you. Klamath Falls faces challenges related to housing. What priorities will you set for housing, including infrastructure improvements? And how do you propose to help fund and manage these projects effectively?
That's a good question, and I wish I had an answer for you. It's a matter of everybody getting together and working towards one goal. Like I said, there is money and grants from the federal government for housing. Again, it's only 10 houses a year. I haven't seen anything that has happened since we had that meeting this spring. Some of the buildings that are out here, it would cost more to rebuild them than it would be to take them down and put them back up. Money is a big issue. It's not out there. I don't see anything from this state even remotely coming this way. It's something that we need to work as a whole. We have nine very talented people on this board here tonight. Whoever gets put into the office of commissioner, I would like to back that person and be part of their committee to work towards this. I don't think anyone of us on the board here is going to be able to answer that question tonight to everybody's satisfaction. Thank you.
This, of course, is a big issue for all of us, okay? Because the basis of a community is the fact that you have to have housing. A lack of housing is a complex issue. The biggest area of concern for me is low income. Affordable housing. With Klamath County's median household income below $50,000, many people are spending over half their income for a place to live. I am encouraged that several well-developed agencies are working on the problem. CASIDA, Klamath Housing Authority come to mind, along with local builders and lenders. They look to be making slow but steady progress. With Kingsley Fields likely expansion over the next few years, our lack of appropriate housing could intensify. On the other hand, it is unlikely that our military would send people into a community with nowhere to live. I believe there will be opportunity for our local entities to partner with federal programs to build new appropriate housing. It looks like the biggest areas of opportunity for the commissioner's office are in the areas of planning, zoning, and permitting. Thank you.
Mr. Nichols, I'll repeat the question. Klamath Falls faces challenges related to housing. What priorities will you set for housing, including infrastructure improvements? And how do you propose to help fund and manage these projects effectively?
Okay, if anybody's looked at the current county strategic plan, the third pillar is housing. It's something our commissioners are currently working on. We all understand that there is a deficit in inventory within Klamath County. I think I was told today, something like 800 homes short. Listen, a home is where everything starts. That's the basis of our lives, and everybody should have an opportunity to have a home. Dan, we need Dan to build homes, maybe some cheaper homes, but Dan, we need you to build homes. And that's not a stab at you. What I'm getting at is we need homes across the board, from low income on up. I'll take my daughter, for example. She's graduating high school. She's going to nursing school. When she's done with nursing school, she's likely going to come back here, and she's going to live here or want to. If she works at Sky Lakes and she's on an entry-level wage there and she's single, she's not going to be able to go out and buy a single-family home. It's just not going to happen. So where does she live? Oh, great, with me, right? I don't want that. What I want are opportunities for her to be able to live. And whatever we can do at the county commission to cut bureaucracy and make it easier for people like Mr. Martin to build homes that can house those young professionals, those on fixed incomes, and get a little bit of handle on the inventory issue we have. That's all I got.
It's almost a multi-directional question, interstructure. A lot of the buildings downtown, they qualify for grants because they're over 100 years old. Use those grants to help rebuild those structures and also everything around them, which attaches to them, you can use in a certain way, depending on how the grant was written. KCC, again, could be a very functional thing as far as OJT, people coming out, working on houses, building them, so the cost is much more effective as far as buyer-friendly. We do need interstructure here. Things are getting old. Have we planned for it? Do we have a budget for it? I can't tell you because I'm not sitting in one of those chairs. But every time it seems to come up, wow, we need some money to fix it. So we need to have a budget to be able to take care of the interstructure that we already have. Instead of robbing from Peter to pay Paul, like I've seen so many builders do, all their lives and not have anything left over to take care of their customers. So yes, we definitely need a pot. And after, as a sole proprietor, I usually dealt with about a million dollars a year in my business, you have to have some criteria for a budget. Thank you.
Mr. Martin, I'll repeat the question. Klamath Falls faces challenges related to housing. What priorities will you set for housing, including infrastructure improvements? And how do you propose to help fund and manage these projects effectively?
Well, thanks for the question. I think one of the first things we need to do for housing is to have a government that inspires housing. I don't think our government in Klamath County or the city of Klamath Falls inspires anything about government. That's what I want to change. Permits need to be reduced. The land, if, we got a lot of pocket farmers, five, six, eight acres, and they don't get water, their land is useless. Let's get the land use laws relaxed a little bit. Let's get these permit fees down. Let's have some government programs as we should tap into so that we can build these houses. One of the biggest things that we see, too, and I hate to be on it, but I'm, it was said earlier, I am not for this pocket annexation theory at all. It doesn't work for building. It doesn't work for taxes. It doesn't work for anybody. We not, we need to not have the city of Klamath Falls holding hostage their water program. That's a big issue, and I face that issue now. And I'd also like people to know that on the affordable issue about my premium homes, I also have a project going out on 97 that we're hitting up for the city that's going to have 93 units, and they'll all be very affordable. So just vote for Dan and get me in there, and we'll get this place rolling. Thank you.
Well, I certainly can appreciate the need for new housing with young family, myself, and knowing other young professionals who are looking for housing as well at all economic levels. And that's what we need. We need new housing at all economic levels. And the county, to a large degree, just has to get out of the way to allow for that housing to occur. That means also it has to happen in a way that builds for our long-term future and particularly for our infrastructure. So I think infrastructure- So I think infrastructure is the key. In addition to smart growth, yes, we need to get out of the way, but of course have that be smart, localized, logical growth and development. But with respect to infrastructure, we all know, and we've seen it, and if you've been here long enough, you've seen the growth and the continued traffic. And we are going to face pressures to modernize our infrastructure, change our infrastructure. The South Side Bypass, Crater Lake Highway, Washburn Way, South Sixth Street, those are all areas that are going to have to be modernized and changed. And we're gonna have to figure out how we keep more traffic on them and as well as more traffic elsewhere. And the county is going to play a leader, even though those are, in some cases, state or federal highways or what have you. Those are our key issues that the county and county leadership will drive. So, thank you.
So you know what's incredible about having nine people run for this position? Look at all these great ideas that they have, that are incredible, from all different walks of life. And so the meet and greets that I've been going to throughout the county, housing is top of list, top of concerns for people. So we went out to Blind Mountain and talked to some folks there, and they're mostly focused on, you know, fees. And they don't want the larger homes, they want smaller homes. They want to be able to put mobile homes on their property. And then, you know, you're looking at, rent prices are insane. You know, we moved up here with my husband seven years ago, and we could not believe even then the prices, and now it's astronomical. We purchased our home at the Running Y for $350. It's doubled. It's not a $600,000 house, but it's doubled. How are we gonna keep up with it? This morning, I had a chance to meet with the lieutenant colonel from the base, and we talked about the affordable housing. If they get a second squadron here, that's another 100 people, or 100 people plus their families are gonna be here. And we don't have homes for them, you know, let alone the overcrowded schools and everything. So it's a huge issue. Do I have a one-size-fits-all solution? Absolutely not. But I just want you to take a look at all of these great answers that were up here. The answers are reachable, are attainable, but we're gonna have to do it through focused groups and committees and getting together and finding, because it's not a one-size-fits-all. The solutions that are gonna work on Blind Mountain are not gonna work in downtown Klamath Falls, are not gonna work at the Running Y, are not gonna work at North County. So we have to be flexible, and we have to be open to all solutions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Amanda and Todd, for asking the questions today. We are gonna start closing statements. You'll each have two minutes to say what you want to share with the group. But this time, we will start with you, Ron, at the end, and work this way.
From the day I arrived here in Klamath Falls in 1984, people have welcomed me. We have shared both good times and bad. They have mentored me, given me an example to live by. In every organization and place of employment, there have been people to look up to and to admire. I've been fortunate to be surrounded by some of the most solid and steady people anywhere. Some who are no longer with us. Not long ago, in conversation with a friend, I expressed my sadness over their loss and my concern for who to call when I needed counsel. Her reply to me was, "Ron, it's your turn now." In response, I offer myself as your next Klamath County Commissioner for position number one. With a lifetime spent enjoying, living with, and facing challenges together with the people of Klamath County, I give my personal pledge that as a Klamath County Commissioner, I will work, I will sacrifice, I will endure, and I will face every day and every challenge, even tempered and cheerfully, as if though the prosperity of every individual depended on me alone. My vision for Klamath County is to be a place where each individual can prosper, that every citizen has the opportunity to use their personal energy and ideas for the benefit of not only themselves, but the community as well. That freedom and dignity be available to everyone, no matter their status. And that our county government always be a catalyst for these things, being transparent, collaborative, and never standing in the way. Thank you.
Dan? We're gonna, Dan's gonna go next. We're gonna come this direction. All right.
When I first started thinking about running for this office, I spent two months debating with myself whether I wanted to do this or not. I'm 74 years old, and I didn't know if I really wanted to get into something like this. This type of a job, having held two different positions in Massachusetts, takes a lot out of you. But I'm willing to do that. I moved out here, I really love this place. I've gotten to meet some fantastic people that live in the Klamath County. If you elect me, I will be there every day. I will push for what you want, not what the majority of the board wants. I will try to do the best I possibly can for you. I want you to keep one thing in mind. I'm one person, I'm one vote, there's still two people sitting on that board. Thank you.
Well, folks, I think this is an incredible watershed year for elections. Not only what's happening at the national level, but what's happening in our county. And it's incredible. If you look at the slate of people, we've got 12 people running for both commissioner positions, and we've got seven folks running for the sheriff's office. So what does that tell you? People want to get involved. They want to stand up. We're all from different walks of life. But I know that you can't really go wrong. And through this entire process, we've become friends. This is a community. Now, we all want what's best for the county, we just have different ways of getting there. But what an incredible moment that we should be celebrating this, that all these people from different walks of life want to get involved. So for me, if you vote for me, know that I have over 20 years' worth of management experience that lends itself well to this position. And I'm currently the only person that's endorsed by all three of our state legislators, Representative Reshki, Representative McIntyre, and Senator Lythacombe. I have working relationship with them. You need the ability to be able to speak to people and persuade them at the state level. And then, you know, I have, you know, my experience as the chairwoman of the Klamath Republicans. But, you know, the position is nonpartisan, and how I speak to that is, I've run companies before. None of them knew I was Republican. It is possible to go to work, do the work, and not put your own objectives on that. So a vote for me is gonna be a vote for a hard worker, a consistent voter. I will be completely transparent, and I will make myself accessible to you. Thank you so much, please vote for me.
So I'll second some of the other comments. I drove out to Eureka, California, a long drive out there last week. And going through Jackson and Josephine Counties, I can tell you, there's not nearly as many people running for office in those other counties as there are here locally. Not nearly as many signs as there are locally. I am not a politician. And I would not be running for an office, at least today in this climate, if I had to stick a letter at the end of my name. That's just a fact. I am running for this job for four years. And I certainly hope, and I said this to somebody the other day, to spend the next four years trying to find and train and recruit the next person, community advocate who wants to fill my role. So that's why I'm running, is to try and address issues, acute issues that I think exist here and now and will exist over the next four years. Dam removal. Dam removal is going to define this place. The restoration of fish and reintroduction of fish is going to define this place environmentally for the next decade. Water issues. Water issues are going to continue to be a source of conflict and turmoil, and frankly, hold us back until we resolve them. And those issues are solvable today. Forest management, forest fires. We didn't have forest fires like we do 10 years ago. And that has as much to do with climate change, but it has more to do with forest management. And we've got communities and tribes and other people who actively want to work in our forests. I think in the next four years, we're gonna see timber mills reopen in Klamath. And yeah, maybe they'll be managing and harvesting juniper or other species, but they will be economically viable. Solar is coming. It's coming down the pike, just like affordable housing. And if we don't manage and control it, it will be in your backyard. And not in a good way. So those are the acute issues that we have to deal with, and they have nothing to do with politics. And we don't need to make the Klamath County Commissioner position a political position. Thank you.
Thanks, all of you folks, for coming out tonight and hearing all our candidates and everything. I moved here 28 years ago. Both my kids went to Henley. I got a grandson now here. I've lived in over 18 states. This is the most wonderful place I've ever lived. I'm here for you folks. I'm older too, I'm 68, and never thought I would be doing this. I've never had a political position. I've never been on a committee. All I've been is a businessman, a successful businessman, for 28 years here, through COVID, through the downturns, and I'm still going. I'm here because I want to be your government. I want to be the guy that you can come into, and you can tell me what's wrong, and we can fix it. We don't need all these rules. We don't need the state telling us what to do. We need to solve these issues ourself. I'll be there every day for all of you folks. I don't have any other agendas, my life is comfortable. So I hope that you vote for Dan. Let's get this place going. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Appreciate it tremendously. First thing I'd like to do is restore the time that we have at the commissioner's meeting and lengthen it to five minutes, not just two minutes, where you'd be able to speak and say something and have it understood. As far as solar, I definitely work with the solar companies to make sure that it was workable with the farmers. I have some people out there to this day that call me for advice and direction on their solar panels. So I'd love to participate in that if I could. As far as the sheriff's department, I'd love to see a reserve sheriff system in here. As far as a resident deputy, where I came from, they couldn't have survived without it. CSQ County now is implementing that particular situation, I found out. So they can cover the vast areas in their county because they don't have the coverage, just like we don't. That's something that I would like to work with the sheriff's department to make happen for better coverage, better deputies. And if you have a trained reserve deputy that works out of their house, they live here. They're not going anywhere. They're not gonna graduate from the academy and then get up and leave and go someplace else to make more money. So they're here for the long haul. Their families are here. Very seldom do they ever go anyplace. As far as land use, we have some of the most severe land use laws here in the state, in Klamath County. We need to loosen those up so we can build. And they have the option to do these things that we need. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Take care.
All right. So unlike a lot of people up here, I'm just gonna come out and say it because all of you are now politicians, just like me. The second you filled out that thing and said, "I'm gonna run for a public elected office," you became a politician. Now, it's nonpartisan, we might not have a D or an R, or maybe we do, or maybe we don't. I get that the commissioner position is a nonpartisan position, but you better believe we are politicians. That's our whole job. Our whole job is to write policy, modify policy, vote on policy, hence a politician. So what do I want to do for Klamath County? Well, I want to be your next politician. I've never done it before, at least in an elected role. I have politicked at the highest levels of government for the departments and agencies I represented at that time. And I want to do that for you now. This is my home, like I said before. This is where I'm from. I live, I breathe, I eat, Klamath County, and I've served it my entire life. Well, my entire adult life. Once I graduated, I went into the military, spent 20 years. Again, I have lots of executive-level experience, working all the way up to the top. Came back to my home and have worked for and served my community as a deputy, and now moving into the political side as a politician. So what do I want to do? One, I want you to vote, vote Nichols for Commissioner Position 1. And what I will do for you is I will work each and every day, nonstop, all day. I will spend 40 hours, 60 hours, 70 hours a week, whatever it takes, in and around this county, in that building, doing what I need to do for you to take your will and impose it back on the bureaucratic system of our government. Thank you.
All right. Let's get a round of applause for all of the candidates once more. And a thank you to My Basin and Randy Shaw Coldwell Banker for sponsoring this and making that livestream and recorded version available to folks who couldn't watch it here live. All of the candidates have agreed to spend about the next hour or so so that if you have a pressing question you'd like to ask them, they are available in the lobby to you. As a reminder, we do have a couple more forums coming up. We will be back in this same space on Wednesday at 5:30 for the sheriff candidates. That'll go from 5:30 to 7, same format as this. And next Tuesday, the 30th, we will have Commissioner Position 3 in this same space. That one will start at 6, there's fewer of them, so we can get through some more questions. And we have secured the Senate District 28 Candidate Forum. That will be on Monday at 10 o'clock in the morning, but that will only be livestreamed and recorded, so that will be on mybasin.com so you'll be able to check out those candidates. Thank you all. Thank you all for being here.